First. And we are being recorded. Thank you for that announcement. And I'm looking for the language, but just want to remind everyone that we still are meeting virtually. And we are allowing public comments. People can call in and raise their hand. They can also submit written comments in advance. So can we please have the roll call?
Yes, trustee Marquez. Thank you.
Present.
Paul Hodges.
Present.
And Chair Dennis Waspe.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Wonderful. Thank you. Um, we are now going to move on to the approval of our minutes from our last meeting, which was held on June eighth. Those meetings are draft minutes and were included in our packet. Um, does anyone have any changes or would somebody like to make a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll move.
At all seconds.
Wonderful. Um, all in favor of approving the minutes as presented. I guess we'll do a roll call vote since we're doing virtual. It's just best to properly capture.
Yes, I can call the role. Uh, trustee Marquez.
Yes.
Trustee Hodges.
Yes.
And Chair Waspe.
Yes.
Thank you. We will now move on to public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to weigh in on items under the purview of this body and that are not listed on the agenda. If you want to speak on a specific agenda item, please wait until we call that item. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak under public comments? I don't see anyone, but I don't know if I have the ability to see that. So can staff tell me if anyone's raising their hand?
I don't see anybody raising their hand. We do have one member of the public. I believe that's Jack Alcorn. Jack, if you want to speak, please raise your hand or unmute yourself.
And I apologize, but is it star sixty-two to raise your hand?
I'm sorry, I do not move that off the top of my head. You can go down to reactions and say raise hand.
Okay, okay. So I'm just gonna do a countdown reverse just to make sure there's no one that wants to speak under public comments of five, four, three, two, one. Seeing no one, we will close public.
And trustee Marquez, before we continue on, I see that Rita Duncan has joined us and I did want to recognize the perspective. Uh, trustee members who are joining us today.
Yes, thank you for catching that. I apologize. We do have two. So could you please recognize them? I apologize. We have Eric Henske.
Eric Henske. And from the Alameda County Mosquito Abeyment Authority and Rita Duncan from Oreloma Sanitary District. Thank you both for being here.
Yes, thank you for your commitment. They've been very attentive to these meetings. Um, we are now gonna move on to uh, item number two. This is updates on City of Hayward project. And I believe Taylor, are you gonna kick this off for us? Wonderful.
Yes, I am. Um, hello, everybody. I have one quick update on a project that has already been presented to this group. That is the industrial shell building at thirty-six thirty-six Enterprise. This is a proposed two hundred and nineteen, six hundred and fifty-six square foot industrial building on a ten point eight-six acre site. Um, the tenant is unknown and the building is speculative. They were deemed complete on November tenth of twenty twenty-one and pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as SEQA, an initial study and a mitigated NAGDEX was prepared for the project. The ISMND was published for public comment review for a thirty-day period, which concluded on August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two. There were two comments received, one from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District and the other from the California Department of Toxic Substance Control. And the item is scheduled for planning commission decision on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
Wonderful. Thank you. Are there any questions from committee members? Um, I'll start with committee members and I'll open it up for public comments. Please go ahead if you have a question or comment.
I have none.
Okay, thank you. Are there any members of the public that have any questions about this item? Please.
I do. This is Rita. Um, can you tell me where particularly is that located? I I do have a, I can't get a sense of where that is on on the near the shoreline.
Yeah, so uh, Enterprise is located near the um, Russell City Energy Center and then south of the Hayward wastewater treatment plant. So it's kind of tucked in that area and it's about point seven-nine miles from um, the bay or the shoreline itself.
So it's south of ninety-two?
North of ninety-two.
Oh, it is. Okay. Well, that must be a sliver of land.
Yeah, I was trying to visualize it. Thank you. That was my question.
Thank you. Thank you for your question. Does anybody else have any question, comments, feedback at this point? No, public. Yes, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I was wondering. So now that we say that is um, north of ninety-two, so that that what's the visual impact on the Hayward Shoreline Interpretive Center? Or um, do we have any dimensions? What's the height of the building? Uh, square footage is great to know, but I mean, is there does the city of Hayward? Are they concerned with visual impacts from the shoreline and and the Shoreline Interpretive Center and things like that? Or are there any maps? Or drawings? Although I I understand there's there's really no proposed deal yet, right?
So there is, there is a proposed, like, I can look up the height and get back to you. Um, I'll email it to you with um, the contact of the planner and they can go into detail. From my understanding, it's a just a concrete tilt-up building. It has some architectural features on the side, but and then glass at the front. Um, we do look, we have industrial design guidelines that every building is required to comply with within the city so that it's been evaluated under those and um, looking at the surrounding development and making sure it's compatible with those buildings around it. As for the height, I'm not entirely sure. I know that zoning district allows up to seventy-five feet in height, but I don't don't believe this building is anywhere close to that.
Wow.
Basically, we have a representative from the city of Hayward, David Donovan. I'm gonna recognize him. He may be able to answer some of these questions. Go ahead, David.
All right, I apologize. Um, the property which everyone speaks of is right across the street from my plant. Um, the ten acres on which you're being spoken of, if people are in question, is the property that has the three or four radio towers that currently reside on it.
So is that the transfer station?
That is not the transfer station. It is uh, that you will see roughly three or four-story radio towers that come out of the property. So um, if you're driving across the ninety-two on the San Mateo Bridge, uh, kind of near the Russell City Energy Plant, you will see four radio towers, I believe it is four, that uh, arise to the atmosphere a hundred and eight, hundred feet tall, maybe something like that. So that give you a better perspective on that land, so. And location.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David. Is it possible once the packet for the planning commission is um, made available, once it's published, can that also be forward to members of this body, please?
Yep, I can make that happen.
Wonderful. Thank you. I'm gonna wrap up public comments on this item. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment on this item? Okay, seeing no one, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda. This is item number three, discussion and approval of San Francisco Estuary Partnership Support Letter. And Heidi, will you be kicking us off on this item?
Yes. Hi, thank you for the opportunity to present today. Um, I am co-presenting with David Donovan. So my name is Heidi Nutters. I'm a senior program manager with the San Francisco Estuary Partnership and um, David Donovan, who just spoke, is the plant manager at the Water Pollution Control Facility in the city of Hayward. So we're here today um, on behalf of Jackie Zipkin, who originally submitted the request um, to request a letter of support for a grant that we're applying for, um, that closely involves um, several of the HASPA agencies. So um, I'm gonna share my screen and hopefully you can all see it um, in just a second here. Um, and I'm just gonna show you a couple of slides. Can you see my screen? Okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Let me just make that um, full screen. Um, so um, yeah, as I said, um, we're presenting with um, with Jackie Zipkin as well, who's on vacation this week. Okay, hopefully the slides look okay to you. So just to give you a little bit of an overview of the grant that we're applying for, the project title is Breaking Ground: Implementing Nature-Based Solutions, Engaging Communities, and Advancing Innovative Projects. Um, this is a proposal that is many years in the making and is part of a long-term partnership that we have with um, the city of Hayward, with ABDA, with many other um, wastewater treatment plants and and other partners around the region. Um, some of those partners are listed here. So the city of Palo Alto, as I said, ABDA and Hayward, um, Save the Bay, Nuwesrakasa, which is a um, community-based organization based in East Palo Alto, um, Arizona State University, who are doing some study, um, design of monitoring studies for us, USGS, and then the Fairfield-Sasun sewer district. Um, this is the EPA Water Quality Improvement Fund, which um, is a uh, twenty-five million dollar fund this year that has put out a call for applications that are due September twentieth. Um, this specific grant, we're requesting about four million for the grant with about four million in match. So it's it's eight million total that we're requesting. And I'm just gonna give you an overview of the project as a whole, and then David's gonna dive into the specifics related to Hayward and the connection to HASPA. So um, the primary um, grant activities, um, the first piece of it involves Palo Alto, so that's not that connected to HASPA, although the work that we're doing there definitely connects to the work that we're doing on the Hayward shoreline as well. So we have been working since twenty eighteen to develop um, an innovative concept called a horizontal levee at that site, um, which I think you've probably heard about before during some of your discussions of the shoreline master plan and and other activities. So this is a nature-based shoreline adaptation solution that incorporates um, sea level rise protection, habitat improvement, and water quality improvement from the treated wastewater. So this is um, our opportunity to actually build one of these out on the shoreline and um, a significant portion, about half of the grant is going towards construction of that of that horizontal levee. Um, and this is a picture of the of the of the project area on the right. And then we're also developing a community-based monitoring program that will be focused on microplastics and metals um, within Harbor Marsh. And then as part of the application, we're also seeking to develop future projects that could be built along the shoreline with, you know, really positive impact for communities. And one of those is the city of Hayward Treatment Ponds Project, which has already been funded for initial feasibility studies, and this is kind of taking it to the next step. So that's where sort of Hayward comes into the picture. So I'll hand it over to David to talk about that and um, just tell me when you're ready to advance the slides, David.
Uh, thank you, HASPA Board of Trustees, for allowing me to speak today. Um, just kind of give you a background, uh, the city of Hayward, uh, with a treatment plant in the city, uh, just signed a contract with a consulting firm to begin upgrading or designing upgrades to our plant that will uh, bring our plant to, I guess, current day standards to uh, start treating for nutrients like nitrogen and phosphorus in our wastewater. Uh, what we see here is the Hayward uh, multi-benefit shoreline project is that the through the studies that have gone on, we can minimize the amount of gray structure that we will need here in the plants by utilizing an asset that the city has already out in the what I call our back two-hundred, because we have approximately two-hundred acres that borders the East Bay Regional Park uh, district land that people walk on. Uh, if many of you got out there, there uh, there's when walked the shoreline, you'll see a kind of a fence line and some water bases that hold water. Uh, they are considered our oxidation ponds. Uh, currently, they are being used primarily for wet weather storage when we need to minimize the amount of water that we put into the discharge pipe to discharge into the bay. Uh, the city is looking to collaborate with stakeholders to develop a project that equally engages the benefits uh, of our community. Uh, by doing this, we can minimize the gray structure, open up a nature-based solution that we can use to help further treat our wastewater, or what I would like to say, polish our wastewater so that we can remove nutrients from the bay, from being discharged into the bay. Uh, we're looking to fund, design, and maintain a nature-based solution to reduce the nitrogen discharge from our community of a hundred and sixty thousand residents and businesses. We would also like to do this, and I've talked to certain people uh, kind of onside with East Bay Regional Park about how we can do a mixed-use uh, levy such that as sea level rise comes into play. Uh, we have a levy that East Bay Regional Park could uh, access as well, so they can get into their uh, different areas of the Hayward Marsh and Hayward Hayward Land. Um, but also help to enhance walking trails and educational opportunities, because many waterfowl also kind of reside in our area and a lot of things go on in uh, our property that many people don't see because it is a closed property. But through the use of a levy, they potentially have viewing areas of all the waterfowl and uh, nature that goes on in our oxidation ponds. Next slide. Um, so the connection to HASPA, the project will leverage uh, the ABDA First Mile Project. Uh, once again, this is a new concept that the water board is actually really uh, sinking their teeth into. They're really excited about utilizing nature-based solutions as opposed to gray structures to further treat wastewater. Um, we're also looking to include HASPA members like ABDA, city of Hayward, East Bay Regional Park Districts to uh, get this project uh, going. Um, yeah, the, as you can see during the HASPA project, which I helped to, I guess, impart some knowledge about our uh, horizontal levy that we're hoping to put in, uh, is now in-integrated into the HASPA master plan. Um, yeah, I'm hoping that this project itself and that we get this grant so we can further our understanding, if we are capable of doing this project, which it seems like from the initial study, that is a very good opportunity for us. That's it.
Yeah, so we just have a final slide with our contact information listed here. And again, the request is to approve the letter of support that I believe is in your packet. So I'll just hand it back to the the acting chair to take it from here. And thank you very much for the opportunity.
You guys have any questions or?
I'm sure you will. Thank you both for your presentation. Um, I'll go ahead and call on um, member Duncan.
Oh, I just, I was a little surprised that you didn't re-reference the Oreloma um, horizontal levy as well as us going down the path of doing horizontal levy uh, two-point-oh. Um, it's already a proven um, nature-based solution. Uh, and it's just a little I guess, a little confused about your presentation. I was trying to say you're gonna try to see if it works. Well, it does work. I mean, it's been working for us. But I don't know about your, you know, the terrain where you are. If there's, you know, some challenges there, but I I found that kind of interesting.
Yeah, I guess.
Other couple, and then my other comment, did you ever think about, we just have a nutrient optimization project that we we're, we've been implementing, I think, the last, what, two, maybe two and a half years? And um, I wondered if that was considered as an option also due to your part of your, your, your premises, trying to reduce the nutrients going into, you know, the San Francisco Bay. So that's, those are my two comments, I guess, or observations to your presentation.
Sorry. Yes, no, we, we definitely, that is the uh, this of us going, looking at this. It was the first, the first pilot project at Oreloma that very much kind of raised our, you know, brought it to our attention that uh, this could be a possibility for our, our facility as well. Um, we also piggybacked, and I apologize for not referencing that. Uh, we've piggybacked on the First Mile Project and had the initial uh, evaluation done. Kind of, I would say, the thirty-thousand-foot view of our plant and what it would be, what, what we could potentially do using the land that we have. Um, we could potentially use the roughly a hundred to a hundred and fifty acres of oxidation ponds for an open water treatment basin uh, as well as roughly, I think it's an eight-hundred-yard horizontal levy as well for potential further treatment of uh, either Brian or other constituents. We do not know yet. But yes, we will be doing a nutrient upgrade project inside the plant so that we are capable, like Oreloma has recently done, doing the nutrient project. We have to do certain amount of nutrient removal inside our plant before we can start utilizing nature-based solutions uh, to further polish and clean the water. So, yes, it was Oreloma who kind of brought it to our attention. It was their project that very much uh, was exciting for us. It's actually, I'm I'm a very, one of the biggest advocates of this, because I like to see our oxidation ponds not only be used as wet weather storage. I would like to be able to see them used as a multi-benefit and mixed-use by being getting further treatment of our wastewater by utilizing nature-based solutions.
Okay, I just.
So.
And notice that. And I guess my other question is, I don't understand the connection with Palo Alto.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. So um, we, the Estuary Partnership sort of works at a regional scale to advance nature-based solutions projects. So what we've done is kind of, we, rather than advancing these projects, you know, one location at a time, we work collaboratively across jurisdictions so that we can learn, you know, um, share lessons learned from the projects and help to sort of like lift up all of the projects as they're, as they, as they are in their multiple phases. So the Palo Alto project is being built and we're, we're tying emerging projects to that and saying, as we're building this, we also want to advance more projects into the design phase so that they can be built next. So that's how they're connected, that we sort of have this regional forum where we work with wastewater treatment plants to advance these projects um, baywide, because they are, it's, it's a complicated design process because it's such a new um, approach to um, you know, addressing these, these issues. Um, and just to speak to the Oreloma um, and add to what David said, you know, that site is um, you know, as I'm sure you all know, kind of a closed system. And so the the ABDA First Mile and then this Hayward Treatment Ponds, these would be like two of the first projects going into the bay that would actually directly discharge that water into the bay. So it's a really big move for the region to be able to take that concept that was, has now been tested and studied at Oreloma. And um, we failed to mention it, but they're very much a, at the table with this regional collaborative that we're working with altogether. Um, so it's kind of the next step of taking that. And the the ABDA First Mile Project already has funding on through the end of twenty twenty-three to advanced design. So now we're turning our attention to the Hayward project to help move that one along too.
Right, I understand the First Mile Project, because we kind of punted it over to ABDA and because it was going to go the north of our plant and we, the board members said, no, the need and the focus should be on the southern, other southern end of the property. So I understand that connection. Um, but you know, Palo Alto is across the bay, but I understand you're, I understand totally the regional approach. So thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you for your questions and thank you for the clarification. Um, are there any other questions on this presentation or comments? And staff is looking for a motion. Correct, this um, item has to be approved, the letter?
Um.
We won't do that. Go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I I support this letter totally. I think it's a great, great thing. I think it's what we need to do. I think make continues to make HASPA relevant and cutting-edge, all respect to uh, due respect to Rita and and Oreloma. They were first, but um, you know, best breeds, uh, you know, copying. And I'm happy we're doing this. And you know, I, I was just a meeting yesterday with the, darn, the Secretary of uh, uh, resources of California, Wade Crowfoot and, and a bunch of water agencies. And boy, the nutrients going into the bay are gonna be under a lot of scrutiny with all the fish dying and all those alcohol blooms that's occurring. So um, you know, reducing nutrients, I think, is gonna be cutting-edge and our, our front-page news. So I think we're gonna need to do everything we can. And I, so I totally support this and I, I wish um, everybody good luck and I hope we get it. And I think we will after, after these this fish die-off that's been occurring in the last couple of days.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm assuming that's the motion you're making there, Dennis, because I'll second that.
Yeah. Move the, yeah, prove this and send it off.
Oh, okay. I hear the, I recognize the maker of the motion and the seconder, but before calling a vote, I do want to make some comments. Um, and, and before that, we also have to call public comments. So just a second. Um, are there any comments from the public before we take the motion on this item? Okay, seen none. And I, I can't tell, but I don't, do we have? Hmm, I do see at least three, maybe four, five members from the public. So I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand. Um, I will do a countdown. You could do your virtual hand or unmute yourself if you'd like to speak. I'll just do a countdown of five, four, three, two, one. Okay, we will close public comments. And before recognizing the motion that was made, um, is this stat, is the presentation we received today? Um, I know that was to this body, but does staff have plans to present it anywhere else? Because if they do, I would like to see it updated to include the information with respect to Oreloma and their project already being tested and proven. So can staff speak to that if they plan to share this anywhere else? No.
I'm not sure if I should answer that or. To, to one.
Oh, well, Heidi, um, do you have other presentations as you look for support at other agencies?
Um, no, we're not. The, we made this presentation just for um, this meeting today. We'll definitely take the um, comment in, in mind about when we present this, providing that context of Oreloma in the future, but we're not planning to give any other presentations during this application process, although we will be um, other, we'll receiving other letters of support, um, but not from a, a board like this.
Okay, and then thank you for that. And before we vote on the item, I just want to make sure that everyone has a chance to review the letter, which is in our packet, and just want to make sure there's no uh, suggestions, modifications, changes before we move to adopt the letter as presented in our packet. Okay. Okay, so if there isn't any, can you please just repeat your motion, just so we're going in proper order, please?
Sure, I would move that we um, uh, forward and approve this letter uh, in, on support of the San Francisco uh, Estuary Partnership uh, for this grant.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Wonderful. And can we please have a roll call vote?
Yes, trustee Hodges.
Yes.
Trustee Waspe.
All right.
And Chair Marquez.
Bye. Thank you, and this passes unanimously. And thank you for the great work on this. And thank you to everyone for your contributions. We're now gonna move to the next item on the agenda, which I believe is an updated discussion on the term sheet. Um, and I'm not sure who's gonna start this, but go ahead.
Chair Marquez, I'm, I'm gonna give a presentation. And I'll just mention about that last item. We'll be sending a Adobe Sign version to get signatures so that we can forward to the Estuary Partnership. So you'll be seeing that at some point in the next week or so.
Thank you.
So item number four. Well, first of all, good afternoon, HASPA trustees, members of the technical advisory committee and the public. I'm Devon Reith, principal planner with the Park District. The draft term sheet that we'll be discussing is attachment three in your packet. And I do have a short presentation, so I'll be sharing. The draft term sheet that we'll be discussing is attachment three in your packet. And I do have a short presentation, so I'll be sharing my screen. Can everyone see this slide?
Yes.
Fantastic. So today's discussion about the term sheet recommendation is going to be in three parts. First. After this presentation, the Hasby trustees will discuss. Then we've created a separate agenda item for the Hasby, excuse me, for the Haspa prospective trustees to discuss. And that's of course. Oraloma Sanitary District and Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District. These are the two. Agencies that will be joining Haspa upon the conclusion and ratification of a future J P A. And then the third is to adopt the recommendation after the discussion of the the term sheet. So as a reminder. The board discussed the term sheet very thoroughly in the June eighth twenty twenty two meeting. So anyone from the public is interested in that discussion. Can take a look at the video or read the minutes in today's packet. But I did want to remind people of some of the basics. So as background, current board and tech members. Are on the East Bay Regional Park District, City of Hayward and hard tech members. Really a comprehensive group of different agencies that have. Either land ownership or infrastructure in the shoreline. So what the proposed board is going to be is the addition of Oraloma Sanitary District. And the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District. The the technical advisory committee will remain the same. So staff did hear very clearly the board's recommendations and made some changes since the June eighth meeting. Two clauses were either added or revised in the purpose section. The first was to include public access and recreation of the shoreline as a climate adaptation strategy. And improving public health through measures such as mosquito abatement. The second clause that was added to find that pastus purpose also involves public education about climate change. And its impacts at the shoreline. And then there was a rewording of the governance clause. Where the trustee's role is to provide guidance on the implementation of the shoreline master plan. And to work as an ambassador to promote the Hayward shoreline and climate adaptation projects there. And then in addition, we did make some minor changes. I do have the word version and track changes. If anyone's interested, we could share them. So that's really the presentation. The. Discussion can now begin. So I'm going to stop sharing and let Chair Marquez leave the discussion first with the trustees.
Okay. Thank you so much for this updated term sheet. And thank you to everyone who participated in the last meeting and provided valuable input. So the updated version is in our packet. This is our opportunity to ask any questions or provide. Feedback, clarification, or just. There's anything the trustees would like to discuss with what was presented in our packet.
I'll go if.
Yes.
First of all, I welcome Oraloma and Alameda County Mosquito Abatement Districts. I'm very happy that you folks came on. And some of our new technical advisory members. I'm very happy about that. We still need to encourage expansion, in my opinion. But I I really like the fact that we've we've. We're moving ahead and focusing on climate adaptation. Rather than just sea level rise, I think it's very important. We need to broaden our opportunities on their opportunities because. The funding, I think, when we talk climate adaptation, gives us much more opportunity. I really like the idea of of public education about climate change. And I'm not exactly sure how we're going to do that. But I'm excited that that's going to be one of our focuses. I I'm interested, so. Under the term, the coordinating authority rotates every three years. That's new, right? It used to be every five years. And but if I'm wrong, it doesn't matter. I'm really happy it's three years. I think that's a pretty big burden to put on an agency to. Five years. So. I I'd like to talk not today because I know it's in 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 the the the. J P A that we have, we're just amending this one now. But I'd also like to talk about, you know, the obligations of of the. The coordinate age agency as far as staffing and things like that. I think we're getting bigger, better, faster and more. It also puts a little bit more burden, in my opinion, on. And so I think we really need to find what the coordinating agency. Should do, but that's a discussion for another time. So Devon, we're we're. Did you? Or you said, you know, the finance part. Were you accepting the discussion on that? Or were you just doing the first half at this point?
At this point, we want to focus the discussion just on this agenda item and talk about the term sheet. Can it be adopted as is? Are there further revisions? We do have a budget item that we'll talk about separately on their separate agenda item a little bit later.
Okay, good, good. That's that's what I wanted to talk about. So. That's great. I'm I'm interested in and I I know it's the best practice. But for an agent like ours, when we're talking about finance. Do we really need an audit annually? I know it's the best practice, but it's also a chunk of money in a very small budgeted J P A that we have. And I I don't know if that would be someone's opinion or or well, I guess, yeah, we have counsel. Is that? I know it's the best practice, but do we need to use valuable resources? Or can we do an audit every? It seems would be a very simple audit. There's not that much money moving around. Would anybody venture an answer to that one?
I'd like to say that, of course, the Park District has its own auditor and we are starting discussions with. That office. At the moment, right now, the term sheets, you know, basically mentions. Audits if necessary, and we'll basically get back to the trustees. At the next meeting confirming or finding out if there's flexibility, you know, is this an annual audit? Is this biannual? And so we'll basically come back to the trustees with an answer to that specific question at the next meeting.
Great. Thank you so much. And so I support this fully. As amended.
Okay, thank you so much. Trustee Hodges?
Yes. What's the 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 term, the time? For this J P A? Is it one year?
No, right now, as written. It is, it does not expire, of course, the term. If you look at the term section, indefinite term of J P A. The language is specify how agencies can be added or withdrawn and how to cancel the J P A altogether. So that's on page one. If you'd like, I could share. That'd be easier.
Okay.
Should I share the screen then?
Sure.
Yeah, let me do that. Hold on just a second. Okay, so this is attachment three in the packet. And the term here, indefinite term of the J P A, meaning the J P A would not expire. And here were those two additional kind of reworded sections that I mentioned. And then in governance. This one here, trustees' roles provide guidance on the master town projects and an ambassador.
Okay, Hodges, do you have any further questions or input?
No, my only comment would be is I I hope we continue. On the drive to to add more. Agencies and tack members. Give us much louder voice and. I I feel like right now we are getting to a point where. There's a lot of things happening on the the Hayward shoreline or the Hayward area shoreline. And I don't know if we're in sometime in the future as we get larger. If I know we talked about it just a little bit last meeting about the the name change or keep it just what it is. But in any case, I like the direction we're going in.
Okay, thank you. I do have a couple comments under purpose and mission. I like in the letter that we're doing requesting the grant, the previous item. How I think it was in like paragraph three, we discussed protecting critical infrastructure. So unless I missed it, I don't see that captured under purpose and mission.
Okay, no, currently not. So that would be another bullet, like a fifth bullet.
Yes, it would be if everyone else is in agreement, I would like to see that added. And then under finance, we talk about the discretion of the board to raise fees. I'm just wondering if we want to consider. A built in escalator like a C P I and a max out, or I just, I don't. Recall all the details. I know we are willing to be flexible, but also just. Wanted to kind of put that out there, but.
Yeah, thank you for that. I'm highlighting a section that was mentioned. Before this bullet under number four sub bullet. Indexing or increasing contribution with a cap at a certain max percentage. Certainly, the trustees are welcome to talk about it now, but that will be part of the J P A writing discussions.
Okay.
That's something that the board supports.
Okay, and then from what I understood from staff, you wanted feedback from the trustees first and then from the prospective members. Is that correct? So before we wrap up discussion with us, does anybody else want to weigh in before we move on to our prospective members?
Yeah, I I have a question about, would we be able to? See the East Bay Dischargers Authority's J P A to to get some ideas on wording?
We had that presentation at the last meeting from Jaclyn Zipkin, their director of Dischargers Authority. And she shared it with staff. Let me ask her when she returns if that's something we can share publicly with the board.
Yeah, but I I wasn't sure either on that.
She, I should say that. Jaclyn Zipkin has been very generous with her time and her. Advice about the process that EBTDA went through to create their J P A.
Okay, thank you. So I'm now going to move on to our prospective members and I want to recognize. Ms. Duncan. Ms. Duncan, can you hear me?
Yes, and I've just been speaking. I was on mute.
Sorry, go right ahead.
But anyway, what I was saying is where it talks about the. Maybe you can move the the term sheet up a little bit. It says indefinite term of J P A. And I I was thinking maybe there can be some language in there that talked about, I I think. Any document, sometimes you need to review it to make sure that it it's still relevant. That maybe something in there that can talk about us at least reviewing it, you know, every two years or something like that. Just so all of us. You know, as we go forward as trustees are really. You know, understanding the elements of the J P A. And I always think oftentimes these documents are living documents. So just a suggestion.
What can I ask a question? Would you be open to three years? So it lines with with the agency being responsible for the.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That would be.
Okay.
Great.
Okay.
Because looking, I know it takes a lot of time and stuff, but. I just think it would would do us. Well, to continue to make sure that these elements are relevant. And you know, we need to make adjustments. And then my other question is concerning the tax. And I know it wouldn't be a part of this term agreement, but. Is there going to be an outline of the expectation for? You know, tack members?
Devon, I think you're muted, or I'm not sure if you're.
Yeah, I just wanted to find the section. It's it's these four bullets here, but it sounds like you'd like another bullet that talks about their purpose.
Well.
And their intention.
Yes, I think it. You know, I know it's really broad, but. And maybe, maybe, maybe it will. Maybe as we get projects. That would maybe we don't need it because. You know, when I think about people's time and stuff, what is the deliverable? What is the project? You know, what is the expectation of their involvement, their time, and how do we measure that? I don't, you know, I don't know if I'm making sense, but for me, if. Say, for instance, for our general manager, our acting general manager, which is Jimmy. Dang, and I apologize for not. Acknowledging him on the call, but. You know, it's wonderful to be a part of these meetings. But what is the deliverable? And maybe we don't have those things yet. You know, because we're just, you know, getting the J P A, we're just really defining roles and stuff, but. I think the clearer we are sometimes about the expectations, the easier it is for people to. Become a part of it and and know their role. That was a lot, but.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. I wonder if we can. Instead of amending the term sheet, if we could push that discussion into the J P A negotiations. Just because we don't have sort of a clear wording at this moment. But it's certainly very important, and especially if the. Technical Advisory Committee members are going to be expected to contribute towards the operations of. Haspa with the dues of, you know, right now, six thousand dollars is being proposed. Certainly, we want them to understand what their staff commitment is and time commitment and their purpose. And as you say, how do they measure? Success after a year or two years of participation. Would that be okay if we sort of deliberated more once we start the J P A negotiations?
That would be fine. I just, as I said, I didn't where. You know, it fit in in us developing this, but it's just a point that I. I thought that we needed to at least look at, particularly when I when I think about, you know. One of the major individuals, you know, I shouldn't say all, everyone is is major. But you know, the flood control and and how they're going to. Provide us with support and assistance. You know, clear what 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 we're expecting, what we would like.
Yes.
Yeah.
We have definitely talked about that at the. Technical Advisory Committee. Remember Duncan, I just wanted to clarify one thing that you were mentioning in your first point. About the indefinite term with a review, in this case, every three years. When you say review, do you mean a staff review? Or do you mean a re? A vote to reaffirm the J P A as maybe as amended? Do you do you want it to sunset after three years? Or do you want just there to be a staff report that? Talks about the components of the J P A itself?
I just, I I really hadn't thought it out what that it looked like, but I all but. What I know from my past experiences is that. You always need to reevaluate if. The J P is is meeting the expectation of the whole of the group. And you know, if that's just a review, one day review, you know, facilitated by you. Every three years or the change in changing of the guard every three years, it's fine. But it to me, it's it's validation that we are. Kind of like recommitted, you know, our particular agency is. You know. We committed for the long haul. And 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 particularly because. We are, many of us are in elected positions. I I may be wonderful with it, but my, you know, the person that follows me, you know. Period. So I don't know if I I've I've answered it, Devon, but. I don't quite know what it looks like, but I know we need to. We need to make sure we review it and I and I appreciate Elise's. Comment, you know, every three years when, you know, we change the responsibility of. You know, the leadership, I think that. you know, the leadership, I think that works real well.
Excellent. I agree. Well, maybe we could also defer that since we don't have specific wording at this moment. We could defer that to also the JPA discussions. We'll make sure that that's language that we uh, you know, negotiate with all the all the five agencies. Would that be okay?
Yeah, because sometimes we get clearer as we get a distance from something. I do. Let me make an I statement, okay?
Yes. So then it sounds like, okay, I'm sorry, um.
Okay, are there any other questions, comments on the term sheets? On the term sheet, sorry. You could unmute yourself or raise your hand. I don't want to call on anyone, but I just want to give you a chance to say something if you have some input. Okay. Um, seeing no one, I am going to open up public comment on this item and see if there are any members from the public that would like to weigh in. I do not see anyone with a raised hand, so I'll do a reverse countdown, give you an opportunity to raise your hand if you'd like to. Five, four, three, two, one. Okay, this is an action item, so I'm going to now close public comment. Um, so I'm gonna do my best attempt on a motion. So I guess before I make a motion, it can any of the members' current or perspective let me know if you object to adding under purpose and mission one bullet point that states protecting critical infrastructure. Does anyone have any concerns or objections with that?
No.
Okay, great. No? Okay, so I my motion. Yes.
So I I thought you were going to call me a little bit ago.
I didn't want to call out your name, that's why.
Oh.
I don't like.
Hard to say, isn't it?
You're a teacher, you should know.
I know, I know.
So no, please, we want to hear from you.
Oh, I I just wanted to have um, I say, I I did a lot of reading on this, and I had a really good discussion with our general manager and Ethel Erica yesterday. And I'm, we're we're very comfortable with the language on the stand. Very pleased with how it looks, so that was our our comment from mosquito baitment.
We appreciate your due diligence, and thank you for taking the time to do that. Um, so at this point, uh like I mentioned, I would like to add protecting critical infrastructure under purpose and mission. Um, I'm comfortable with the response with regard to the build an escalator and addressing the increase in fees at a later date. Um, but I'm not comfortable with, can you, I guess, share your screen again? The indefinite, I do feel like we have to come up with language right now about the three-year. I don't want to approve this because then wouldn't it require an amendment if we changed that language?
Let me get to that section. Here's what I was thinking, and and you can let me know if you think this is correct or not.
Okay.
If if the board acts and adopts the term sheet, I'm getting to it now, hang on a minute.
Sure.
And um the board acts and adopts the term sheet with the the amendment we're just talking about on purpose and mission. What then starts, and we're going to talk about this at the next item, is uh the JPA writing itself. So this becomes the template uh current law and all the things that go into writing a JPA that's valid for the year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, and beyond. We'll start negotiations. Uh, I shouldn't even say negotiations. I'll just start discussions amongst the different agencies that make up HASPA. And at that time, we will be sure to wordsmith the right clause and right clauses that we're sort of putting off for the future.
Okay, so this is just kind of like in agreement to get started with the process, but it's not finalized. Is that accurate?
Well, the the term sheet will be final, but then the JPA, which is the legal document, that is then starts to get drafted, and in that drafting, we'll make sure we include this language about the three-year check-in or revote.
Okay, so do we also have to table the adding protect protecting critical infrastructure?
No, I feel like since we have language that's very specific. Uh Amanda can note that in the notes, and we will
Okay.
amend the term sheet right now.
Okay.
To add that bullet.
Okay, then I'd like to move the item to adopt the term sheet as presented in our packet with the one modification of adding under purpose and mission protecting critical infrastructure. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all right. Uh, who's been on this board the longest?
Well, we'll let the guy that's furthest away to uh go ahead and second it.
We'll give it to our president. Okay, so the item. Go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so the item has, the motion has been made by myself, seconded by Director Waspe, and can we please have a roll call vote?
Yes. Trustee Hodges.
Yes.
Chair Waspe.
Hi.
And Chair Marquez.
Hi. And I think we should congratulate everyone. This, we've worked really hard to get to this point, so thank you all for your contributions. And we will now move to the next item, which I believe is a budget item.
Yes, this is an item to discuss the budget of preparing the the JPA now that the term sheet has been adopted, and thank you all for the adoption. Let me share my screen. I do have a slide I want to present. Okay, so the Park District has looked very closely at the term sheet. And our legal counsel is proposing to hire outside counsel to draft the JPA agreement using this adopted term sheet. And that's a decision that was made very recently, so we haven't had a chance to sort of vet it, but this is our best thinking on our legal team's side, that an outside counsel, and I believe that the JPA, uh excuse me, the HASPA trustees talked about this at the last meeting. There is value in sort of a neutral third party, even though our district would manage the contract. We would have outside counsel, and we've just begun discussions with certain firms. And we are looking at a budget of, oh, let me stop stop there for a moment. There's an important vote coming up at the Park District when the board will vote on an item on September sixth next week that will authorize staff specifically to create HASPA accounts, invoice and expend funds on behalf of HASPA. So even though we've been the the coordinating authority for the last year, we haven't actually had, staff hasn't had that approval from the board. So once we get that, we'll be in the position to send invoices for dues and expend money. But what we want the discussion today to be about is two different options that we want to hear your thoughts on. So first of all, we're hearing that an estimated budget for creating a JPA with outside counsel would be about thirty-five thousand dollars. And our legal staff time to administer that contract would not be charged to HASPA. That'll just be incorporated in the work they do. So let me, before we go on to the two options, let me stop there and see if there's any discussion about the idea of hiring outside counsel. It's really our best recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Um, does anyone have any feedback on that? Or can I, I'll look, just make this a little bit more precise. Does anyone have any objections to seeking outside counsel for the JPA? No, okay, I think we're good. Thank you.
Okay, so then there is a decision to be made here. Two choices. One is to pay that contract with funds that will come in the near future from the twenty twenty-two HASPA dues. We expect that balance to be about forty-eight thousand dollars. So that's option one. Option two would be to leave that money aside for future use and raise additional funds separate from the twenty twenty-two dues. So Steph has a suggestion, but I'm interested to hear the um the board.
Okay, does anyone have um feedback on this? A preference?
Well, I I would weigh in a little bit. Uh, you know, I think the East Bay Regional Park District would be, I mean, it's it's get me now or get me later type of deal. Uh, I think the Regional Park District could do it either way. I'm one, I'd be interested in hearing of our new, what our new members think. We we invited them to join us. We um uh invited them to join at a certain cost. Uh, if we um do additional costs, um, I would, I'd be wondering how uh Oraloma and the mosquito with Bateman District feel. I think the Park District could go either way. I think if I were doing it, I'd use the funds we have, but uh I'd like to hear other people's comments. Especially our new members.
Okay, thank you. Um, do our new members have any ideas? I know obviously you you would have to talk to the general managers of your respective agencies, but just any initial thoughts?
Um, my thought is I want to keep this thing moving along, so I it would be to um go ahead and and just take it out of uh twenty twenty-two dues.
Okay.
And it kind of makes sense to me that it would happen out of the current money, and then as we join, then you have more money in your funds, so I I don't know without talking to Ryan and the board where we would go with that, but that's my initial thought.
Okay.
Um, this is Rita. I would agree, uh because you know, before Oraloma, you know, signs any agreement, we would have to uh do our due diligence with our own attorney as well, you know, so um, if you take it out of the current fund, that makes sense to me.
Okay, thank you. I also support taking it out of the current funds.
Excellent. Well, could we have a motion or would you
Sure.
to just leave it at that as an informal uh acceptance of spending the current current dues?
Um, let's go ahead and um have a motion. Would someone like to make it?
Yeah, I I'd like to make it. Um, they're not numbered, but the the first uh option to expend funds from twenty twenty-two dues for this year
To pay.
For the attorney cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand.
Okay, I'm just going to just clarify outside counsel, just so that we're explicitly clear. And it's been seconded, and can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Trustee Hodges.
Here. Here, yes.
Yes. Chair Waspe.
All right.
And Chair Marquez.
Hi. Thank you all.
Okay. Well, that leads us right to the next item. Uh, if you would call number six, this is our last item of the evening.
Okay, I'm sorry, I I I'm sorry. I do number six, old and new business, so um, we have standing items on our agenda. Um, this is for future meetings, correct? And JPA updates and for the shoreline master plan project updates. We also would like to schedule a tour of Hayward Shoreline, walking tour or vehicle tour preferred. Our next meeting is October thirteenth. And I did hear from my colleagues that there is interest um at a later time to discuss the roles and responsibilities of the TAC committee. And Chair Waspe, I know you mentioned something about the budget. I can't find my note on it, but did we cover that in the last item, or was there something else you would like to add for future items?
I I think we covered that.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to ask specifically if there could be a little discussion about the idea of a tour of the Hayward Shoreline. I think this was Chair Waspe's idea. As we start to plan this out, it would be a public meeting, and we wanted to understand, you know, people's ideas. Should we do a walking tour, let's say, from the shoreline center? Or a vehicle tour that was more elaborate? That got us further out into the um different parklands.
Um, I think to have it open to the public, we probably have to do a walking, I unless we're going to rent a vehicle and they're going to board the vehicle with us, but I'm I'm not sure in terms of logistics, which one is is easier.
I think in terms of logistics, certainly a walking tour would be the easiest.
Yeah, I think that would be my preference. What do others think?
Um, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Look, thank you. Um, yeah, I I mean, a walking chair would obviously be the easiest. And you know, my goal here was just to get us back out, get us onto the shoreline, see what we're looking at, see what we're working for. And of course, I know it is a public meeting, but and and I know that everyone could come, but I would also like to specifically invite um, well, everyone on the mosquito abatement district board, everyone on the Oraloma board, everyone on the Hayward Council, everyone on the Regional Park District Board, and everyone on the hard board. Uh, I I think uh, I think we've got momentum. I think we've got a a a master plan that's that's really, really good. Uh, I think we've got a number of projects. I know the Regional Park District does down at the Hayward Marsh. Some projects that are really sophisticated and really amazing and uh really need some funding. So uh, you know, I I wish we could get a bunch of vans, but I think we'd have a lot of people, but I I I don't care if we walk. I think we can see some really great things and and get down on the shoreline. Uh, I just hope we can invite lots of people. That's that's my goal. And um, warrant, warrant after um after November eighth, I would suggest, um, you know, maybe inviting our new assembly member who represents that area and our new um senator, state senator that represents that area.
I like that idea. I have a question. Could we schedule something in addition, so not to take the place of our next meeting, but I guess it would be considered a special meeting, but a meeting where we would just have public comments and the walking tour. Um, can you do that? Because I I think we have a lot of business to cover on October thirteenth. And then I like your idea of waiting till after the election, just to see who our new representatives are.
Well, if I may interrupt.
Go ahead.
Permission, like, because I be, but yeah, I mean, and I I would be totally in favor of that. Um, get to the point where in January or February, I would like to have, see our new representatives down there to see what we're doing, to get an opportunity to see the shoreline, what the 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 threat is, and our plan to figure out that whole shoreline down there. Also, I'd love to do it on a king tide. That is so representative of what's going to happen in the next, who knows how many years, but if you get out there on a king tide, it's amazing of what you see, because sometimes the water washes right over the top of those levees, and it's it's an incredible visual.
Okay, so you're suggesting we wait till January or February?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's uh time fly. That's not that far away.
Yeah, that that works. Anybody else have any ideas around this suggestion? Okay, does staff have what they need?
What I I I did have a comment. I didn't understand. Uh Dennis, you said king's tide? I never heard that.
A a king tide is when the tides are the highest of the year. And they've gotten to the point nowadays where if you, you know, we've made some markings at the Hayward Shoreline Interpretive Center. This is what this is what um sea level rise is going to look like, the predictions. This shows you. I mean, if and the king tides only happen a couple times a year, but it will, a- as France says, it's going to be the norm. And you'll be amazed at the norm, because there aren't any levees. The levees are covered. I did I did it once. It was so amazing. I walked out on a king tide day all by myself, didn't know what was going on, walked out on the levy. I said, eh, this is kind of funny. It's not, nothing's happening. I got a couple miles out. I came back and I was in four inches of water and had to walk right through that water, because that was the only way to get back. It's it's, it will show you what's going to occur um in our future.
I think that's, I I I think that's exciting, and I think we should record it so we can, you know, remind people, this is this is, this is a challenge that we have, and this is why we have this, you know, this this HASPA to make sure that we are forward-thinking, you know, period. I I I can't wait to see it. Thank you for explaining it to me, Dennis.
True.
Thank you, and I like the idea of recording it. Like you said, we've we've got to become um YouTube savvy and capturing this information to share with the broader public. It'll be aligned with our educational component. Does anybody else have any other input on this item? Does staff have anything else before we adjourn?
No, thank you all. I did want to recognize the tech members and thank them for for joining today. And um, thank you, Chair Marquez, for stepping in to the emergency role as our chair. And thank you all for your attention.
Thank you. Well, our next meeting is on October thirteenth. Go ahead.
May I, may I interrupt? I I there are no assurance for board comments, but if if um if we're looking for future items to talk about. If 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 we're looking for future items to talk about, I'm I'm really interested in the algal blooms that are occurring in the bay and and the fish die off. It's just been recent. I don't know if we can get a report on that. I bet our technical advisory committee could do that in a future date. And also to finish off, I would really, really like to adjourn this meeting in in memory of Betty Moose, who, if you didn't know Betty.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody knew Betty. She was a tenacious, fierce defender of the shoreline and was probably a a charter member of the Technical Advisory Committee and served on the Technical Advisory Committee for many, many years. And it's a great loss.
Thank you. We send our condolences to her family and loved ones and we will adjourn in memory of Betty Moose. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.